Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, July 15th. Welcome to the San Rafael City Council Meeting. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll. Sorry, I got her right as she walked away. Wait, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill is absent. Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scaladilla is absent. Mayor Kate?
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum. We met in closed session. I invite the city attorney to report out.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. So, welcome, everyone, whether you're tuning in and listening virtually from your own home or wherever you are, or here in person. We're glad you're here. As always, we like to start our meeting thanking the city employees who run our city so beautifully every single day. And today, I have the opportunity to recognize the employee. So, in the city of San Rafael, there is recognition for the employee and team of each quarter. And at the end of the year, there's one for team and employee of the year. And today, we announce that the employee of the first quarter for 2024 is parking attendant John Olmos. And we are so grateful to him. He was very surprised. We had a little event this morning to honor him, and he had his coworkers who said, talked about what he has been brought to the city, as well as his boss. John has worked for six years for the city, and his work colleagues in their nomination stated that he's profoundly impacted parking operations for the better, and he always goes above and beyond in his duties and takes great pride in his work. We want to thank John publicly here at the council meeting for his dedication to our community, and congratulations on this important recognition. At the end of tonight's meeting, we have quite a few agenda items. At end of tonight's meeting, I will be adjourning in honor of Rich Nave. He was a former council member who recently passed away. I will have more comments at that time when we adjourn. And then finally, as part of our opening remarks, we believe it's important to include a land acknowledgement. This is not the only work that we do with the sovereign nation and the tribe, but it's an important part. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewoc people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Riau. And we honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. I will turn to the city clerk who will describe how people in the chambers can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide comment displayed on the podium and the projector as a timer to stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. If you're watching on Zoom, you can select the live transcript button to enable that feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanral.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with city manager and council member reports. I will turn to the city manager, Christine Alivich.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers and community. I have a few announcements this evening. Today, the nomination period to run for office in the city of San Rafael in the November 5th general municipal election opened today. Seats are up for election for mayor, councilmembers District 1 and 4, city attorney, city clerk, and San Rafael City Schools Board of Education trustees, areas 1, 3, and 5. The deadline to file nomination papers is Friday, August 9th, unless an incumbent fails to file, which would extend the deadline for that seat through Wednesday, August 14th. For more information, you can contact our esteemed city clerk at city.clerk@cityofsanral.org. This Wednesday evening, July 17th, we have our next Police Advisory and Accountability Committee here in chambers at City Hall. You can participate, or you can watch via Zoom. There's a fun event coming up. The San Rafael Police Department has a Touch a Truck event with a bunch of public safety vehicles. That'll be at Pickleweed Park on Saturday, July 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00. And we also have our big annual, it'll be the 41st Annual National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th, which is an amazing, incredible community event. Citywide, great opportunity to connect with your mayor, your council members, police chief, other city leaders. A lot of neighborhoods host these beautiful events with food and stuff for the kids. And if you'd like to participate, and you haven't done so in your neighborhood before, you can contact the police department directly. Also, the Chamber, the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Business Improvement District are hosting their first annual Dancing Under the Lights on Friday, August 9th. So, mark your calendars from 5:00 to 9:00 on Fourth Street and A, Tullutens Place. There'll be food trucks and craft table, artist marketplace. It should be really fun, carryover from our COVID days. Upcoming council meeting updates. On August 5th, the regular city council meeting has been canceled. A little summer recess will return on August 19th with a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I just wanted to make note that at that particular meeting on August 19th, we will have an agenda item and a staff presentation to provide the community and the council with an all-things-homelessness update, which will be a robust presentation and discussion. We will be bringing forward some contracts for service providers for the sanctioned camping area that the city is working on establishing in the next couple of months. More legal updates and more programmatic updates to come at that meeting on August 19th. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues for their reports. Councilmember Kurtz?
No updates.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Well, I know there was one event that you went to, Rachel, on Fire Station 57. I was there. It was a, it was a great event, although the chief had a young person interested in his job, showed up with a shirt on that said "Fire Chief" on the back. So, look out, chief. You got competition out there. So, that was Fire Station 57. San Rafael SAN met, we had our end of June meeting. We continued to pursue some of our strategic options of contracting with CMSA to receive our services rather than the city. And we also had, and Rachel, weren't you at the MCC? No, you weren't at MCC MC. MCC MC at Fairfax on the end of the month. Very nice presentation. Derek, what is Derek's last name? Johnson. The new chief executive officer at the county was there, gave a very welcomed presentation in what he said. So, it was, it was a good gathering. The week after the, on the holiday of the Fourth of July, I met with the LAFCO representative at the request of that representative, Jason Frye from LAFCO, wanted to meet regarding the San Rafael SAN upcoming contract with CMSA. And we had a very nice discussion. I was joined by SR SAN's representative to CMSA, Dean DiGiuboni. We had a very detailed and productive discussion and decided that if LAFCO were to get involved, it would be much later. So, we are continuing on our, on our course. The last meeting I attended was CMSA Board meeting, Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board meeting last week. We dealt with some very usual issues and one extremely unusual issue. As you may recall, CMSA, of course, is located sort of on the south side of the 580 freeway. Over the hill is San Quentin. Adjacent to San Quentin is a site that is being proposed for workforce housing. Unfortunately, two major pipelines that come from San Quentin and come from the Ross Valley sewage collection, wastewater collection pipelines come through that property and pass almost directly under the site of this, of this proposed housing. They're not just pipelines. One, the one that feeds into the plant, we, CMSA inserts their very strong hydrogen peroxide to neutralize the sulfides, which creates smell. It's an odor control proposal. The hydrogen peroxide is delivered in 18-wheeler tankers that have to pull in and twice a month and fill up the tank to insert the, to inject this into the pipeline, which is almost exactly in the middle of the proposed development. So, we had a very unusual land developer come to CMSA and make a presentation at our last meeting. CMSA Board has authorized the general manager to expend some funds on feasibility studies to find out a way to, is there any way we could put our hydrogen peroxide in somewhere else? Can, what can we do? So, all engineering options are being evaluated right now. But I wanted to let you know about this issue because the developer wanted to break ground, wants to break ground next year, like first quarter. So, we're moving very quickly to evaluate options to deal with this unfortunate situation. So, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I have a few items to report out as well. The representative to the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit, we had a meeting back in June. We haven't had a meeting here, so I haven't done the report out. We adopted the budget fiscal year '24-'25. It's a balanced budget. And then we also had a smart path, or smart ribbon cutting. Now, at the Larkspur Station, there'll be a Connect Shuttle. It's called that Connect, and it's timed so that folks can get off from the Smart train, take the Connect Shuttle over to the ferry. It's about a quarter of a mile, and so it's one of those gaps that both the ferry and Smart has been trying to solve. So, we shall see. Hopefully, it'll be very well-used and well-timed. And that was a very well-attended event. So, we look forward. I will continue to report out on how it is being used as we go forward. In terms of the ridership numbers for Smart, they continue to increase in May of 2024. So, I'm one, I'm one month behind, but these are from the June meeting. The ridership numbers was 31% over May of 2023. So, 31% over. That translates into, in terms of riders, 85,400 riders. It was a new all-time monthly ridership. In addition, the pathways, which are adjacent in many places to the, to the Smart Rail, also had a record of 80,000 walkers and riders. So, Smart continues its upward trajectory in terms of riderships and pathway users. In addition, I attended two different meetings for the Transportation Authority of Marin Countywide Transportation Plan. The countywide transportation plan is exactly what it sounds like. It's really looking at Marin County as a whole ecosystem and what will be the priorities going forward. There will be an additional, we've had one community workshop, there'll be another one the end of July with both the broader board, as well as any members of the public who are interested in participating. In addition, I'm part of an executive committee at TAM, and we talked about some Measure A expenditure recommendations. So, transit, always a lot going on in the transit world. Finally, two more things. I attended the Bay Can Regional Meeting. I cannot think of what Bay Can stands for. It is the regional meeting that has to do with the Bay, actual the Bay, San Francisco Bay, and having to do a sea level rise and climate issues and projects that are adjacent to the Bay. It's a Zoom meeting because people literally Zoom in from all over the Bay, and it's always interesting to hear, for example, how some of the cities in the South Bay are dealing with the rising sea and how they've either assessed themselves or had different programs going forward. That work will inform what's going to be happening here in Marin County. Marin County has brought in a consultant to look at how do we expand the work, the acronym here is BayWAVE. What we do are inner jurisdictional work here in Marin County. How can the work we do here on BayWAVE help Marin County to compete at both the regional and state level going forward as we work to mitigate and adapt to climate change and the rising bay? So, and finally, Marin County Fair. I have, I know the three of us attended it. Maybe you're one of the lucky ones that also was there. It was, I know today's IJ, the, the participation rate was, was down, probably because it was about 95 degrees when we were there, and we were there in the, in the evening. But kudos, we just want to say kudos to the County of Marin for putting on the fair every single year in San Rafael, bringing in great exhibits and musical acts and the rides. And so, even though it was very hot, oh, and the animals, the little pig races. So, so the people that did make it there, I think, really enjoyed it. So, we just wanted to make sure we gave kudos to the County of Marin for their great work on that one. And the transit ridership, the free transit ridership, I will have those numbers next time. We're through the roof. So, people did take advantage of both the free transit on Marin Transit, as well as on Smart. So, thank you, as always, for the work you do off, off of the dais. Before we get to the consent agenda, I will take any comments from the public on just the city manager or council member reports. If anyone would like to have a comment, now is your time. You are invited to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in, but not required. If anyone here'd like to speak. Come, come on down.
Thanks. My name is Eva Crisanti. I write the Substack MarinCountyConfidential.substack.com. And recently, it's had a special focus on the city of San Rafael because of Rachel Kurtz's activities. I just want to point out that I had to come in person today because you guys made a decision to restrict Zoom participation, which is distinct from many other cities and towns in the county. And it does seem that other towns and cities are managing that quite well. In my many years of investigating corruption in San Rafael, I've noticed that this is really the most secretive and non-transparent municipality in the county. And I think some of that comes up in the CPRA that I ran on Kurtz's correspondence. I ran simultaneously CPRA's with the county and with the city of San Rafael. And the county delivered material from Rachel Kurtz to the county that should have shown up in the materials delivered to me on the San Rafael CPRA, and those did not appear. There are a lot of questions raised by your selective redactions. Mr. Epstein has not provided adequate explanations for that. I've had conversations with several attorneys about this peculiar practice, very selective redactions. And I'll talk more about that when Mr. Epstein's salary issues come up later on this. In the meantime, I do not have time, and I do not have breath in 18 seconds to get to the rest of this. But the last article dealing with Rachel Kurtz is at MarinCountyConfidential.substack.com. Thank you for your time.
I am taking public comment on the city manager and council member reports. Is there any comments on the reports you just heard? So, that's not open time for public expression, just on the reports. Yep, go ahead. Wait, lift up the microphone a little bit so we can hear you better. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's a request. When you give ridership adoption numbers, it would be nice to know a little more detail. I mean, are these paying customers? Are they bringing cars off the road? Or, you know, what, what benefit is being derived from that? Are we getting to the point where going to need more cars, another train, maybe more drivers, create a few jobs, that kind of thing? So, just a little more detail. So, all I'm asking for.
Thank you. I'd love to get more detail on Smart. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any. We will move to the consent agenda. There are 4A through, let's check the limmer, M? My colleagues like to poll any of the items. Okay. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar, and that is items 4A through 4M? If so, yep, please come down.
Good evening, city council. Can you hear me? It's kind of on the same theme. Some of the projects you have on this list are considered completed. And what I'm not, and maybe it's published somewhere, and I don't know where it is, but did the goals originally identified at the beginning of the project become realized? Or did the reality in some situations change the goals in such a way to improve the result or diminish the result for good reason? That's really a little.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda? Yeah, welcome.
Oh, good evening. I'd like to talk about the, I think it's item G, which is the West End Village event. I see that there's a recommendation to approve it, which I'd like to kind of support. My name is Joel Ice. I own a business down in that area, and I used to live in that area, so I have a strong cultural connection to that community. By way of support of your interest in supporting that, I wanted to share with you a couple of events or activities that have developed spontaneously in the neighborhood, partly connected culturally to that event. One of them is that I've been speaking with some of my other neighbors, the businesses in that area, about trying to stay open in the evening during that to sort of generate a, a kind of a guess you'd call it an evening mart, where they would stay open, put items out on the sidewalk. And I've gotten some interesting support from the guy who's got the skateboard shop wants to do a skate, a skate jam, which would supervise the skating down there. The guy who's got the bicycle shop at the other end wants to bring some bicycles for a bicycle demo. I've been talking to the woman that has the classical music thing, and Adam Vialanti is interested in talking with her. And I've got a couple of friends who are still walkers who want to come down and kind of make it interesting for the kids and for the crowd. All of these things will conform with the safety considerations that are going on. The other item I just wanted to share with you is that it's becoming very much a part of the community. One of my neighbors and I are going, creating a kind of a, a, a marketing thing where the neighbors get together and market discounts in the neighborhood. And the event has become kind of iconic with the neighborhood, and we're developing, this is, this is a rough draft. I'm just going to share these with you. This is not permanent yet. It's, we're working on putting it together, but there's quite a few businesses that want to be part of that.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you for all that Rebound Bookstores does. Oh, wait, get to the city clerk, and then she'll distribute it to us. Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda?
Consent calendar, C-stipend compensation program for boards, commissions, and committees, and city council compensation. I'd just like to remind you, as discussed many times previously, appointees to councils and committees, commissions, commissions and committees are always flawed, never more so in San Rafael, where you have kind of a three-layer cake with white people on the top, white and wealthy homeowners on the top, and everybody else on the lower levels of that cake. When you do appoint people to commissions and committees, it is usually people who will reinforce your particular point of view. Often, these people are in the employ of the county, in the employ of the city, or they have some vested interest in the outcome. have some vested interest in the outcome of whatever is being determined by the commission. You know, it has been pointed out to you previously that allowing a more democratic process for appointees, for example, going to the Canal District and asking the actual people who live in the Canal District, who provides so much of the labor that makes the city run and that helps your tax revenues, asking them, not the head of a nonprofit there, or another nonprofit there, but asking the actual people who do the labor, who would you like to see on this particularly vital committee or commission that deals with, say, police accountability? Not the homeowners, not the people in the $3 million houses, not the people with the Teslas, the people who work at the car wash, the people who wash the dishes in the restaurant. Again, you know, there is a way to do this better. A better world is possible, one where you don't end up with costly litigation, as you saw with San Rafael Police with Mr. Lopez. Give people a seat at the table, give them a steak.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone, I request a motion on this item, please.
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. We have two public hearings. They're both a little related. They're assessment districts. So the first one is the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. And welcome, this might be your first presentation here. Okay. Once we have the staff presentation, then you can give public input. Okay? Yeah. So don't go too far away. Go ahead, Jonathan. Yep, so I've closed a public comment on that item. There will be public time for open expression at the end of the meeting to comment on anything that you hear during the meeting, being what someone else says or what the council says. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm Jonathan Schellen, the Deputy Director for Administrative Services for Public Works. Thank you for having me. I have the honor of presenting the next two items here, starting with Bay Point Lagoons' Assessment District. So first slide here, the purpose of the public hearing, any interested person prior to the conclusion of the hearing may file a written protest with the clerk. During the hearing, city council may order changes in any of the matters of the engineer's report. If a majority of assessed persons protest against the increase of an assessment of any previous year exists, the proposed increase will be abandoned. And if a majority of protests has not been filed, the city council may adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment, either as originally proposed or as changed. I will note point three is a mute point for Bay Point, since there's no increase in the assessment, it's flat every year. So background and history, 1990, Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District was formed essentially to protect and enhance the wildlife habitat and water quality of the various waters nearby. Funds generated from the district support ongoing maintenance, repair and improvements of public lighting, landscape assets, and associated infrastructure within the district. Some more recent status activities, district comprised about 150 homes. The Bay Point Lagoon Homeowners Association did take over the landscaping, meaning the mowing and immediate vegetation management within the district. In 2015, they really concentrated on two different concerns, odor from the lagoons, which has been, for the most part, mitigated or greatly improved with the manual management by DPW staff, and then the improvements to the nearby case pump station. And recently, this past year, WRA conducted landscape design work, which actually we're meeting about later this week to get their final design recommendation. So within the funds that have been collected, broken into three different parts, you can see the purpose here for each one and the projected balance at the end of the fiscal year, projected because there are still expenses that come in over the last month or so. The final proposed assessments, again, hasn't changed since 1996, $131.44 per parcel, approximately 150 homes, though it's really 129 that we actually assess, and each single-family dwelling is assessed equally. We do meet and connect and communicate frequently with the HOA. Like I said, I'm meeting with several members later this week and can continue to keep that communication open and they've already provided a draft report. So the options at the end of the public hearing, conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution, thus ordering the levy of the assessments for FY 2425, or the other option, do not adopt the resolution, which results in no levy of assessments for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Jonathan. I will see if there are any questions. Councilmember Kurtz? Councilmember Bushy? I just have a quick question. I noticed the assessment hasn't been increased since 1996. And when you're talking to the HOA, is there a concern that it's going to lag so far behind and what it's being expended towards is getting more expensive that there's going to end up being a gap and then there would have to be a very large increase at some point?
That's a good question. I think that would be most important with the potential replacement for the pump station. They have done a good job of managing the water levels to mitigate the other concerns. And like I said, the HOA took over the landscaping duties, so it's maybe more of a question of re-appropriating those funds that have been acquired that might not be needed for those needs towards the pump station. But there will definitely be a large capital need at some point that I don't perceive the current trajectory being able to meet. So that's, that is a question that's still in communication.
Okay. Thank you. I will open up the public hearing on this item, so members of the public may make comment on the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District agenda item. If you'd like to speak to it, now's your chance. Hi, so this is on the Bay Point. So, and pull up the microphone so it's easier. There you go.
My name is Michael Glasner. I live on Nevada Street and I walk down the Bay Trail all the time. And there's a significant odor that comes from a couple of lagoons. I wasn't sure what it was from. I thought maybe it was a naturally occurring type thing. It seems to me that the birds don't mind much, but I've got asthma and sinus issues and if I stand there for, I can't, there's, I can't point to the map, but near the tall office building down toward the San Quentin Park, toward the bridge, there's a very strong odor comes from there. It's just unbearable for me. And then it's really good for about half a mile until you get past, you go past Target, past Kerner, or the trail that connects to Kerner. But at the corner where it turns, where, if you're walking from Pickleweed, where it makes a right turn, the first right turn, there it's really strong. And I don't know if that's, you know, again, natural or not, but if, I guess if it's natural, I'm all for it. But, but something made me think it wasn't, that there's something funky, you know, I'm not sure what. Maybe something abatable, something that can be done, maybe introduce another species that might, you know, counteract whatever's going on there. I don't know. But I'm guessing there's some natural way to deal with it without chemicalizing the canal. As far as water quality, I'm very concerned about the plasticizing of Pickleweed Park and what that's going to do to the wildlife surrounding. I don't know anybody who's for it that lives in the canal. It appears to me that that effort is being done by people who want to use our park for their purpose, people from Dominican, people at the high schools that want to use it for multipurpose. Everybody there plays soccer. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll ask staff the question about the odor of the lagoon, once we close the public comment. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone, I will close the public comment. So maybe just speaking to that kind of odor management in general, because we know that's been a long time and I don't know if you can go so far as to speak to possibly naturally occurring or not, but maybe just speak to what we are able to do.
Yes, so, hi, April Miller, Director of Public Works. So we go out to the lagoons, well, a couple different times a week, but we go out and assess the odor and every single week to see what it smells like. I mean, near water, it, you know, it doesn't smell like it does in other parts of the city, so it is natural, what we've discovered. But we've noticed that we actually now recharge the lagoon more frequently, so every two weeks we're recharging and that has significantly helped both with algae and odor. And so we have that on a schedule. Sometimes when it's low for a day, maybe there's, the smell's a little bit higher while it's in the recharging process, but that's what we're doing over at the pump stations is we manually turn on the pumps for a day to lower and raise to make sure that there's fresh water and that really helps with the odors. We're also exploring some natural, or some islands that we can put inside of the lagoons to help absorb some of the different things and algae in there to try to reduce the algae. So everything we're doing in the lagoons is natural.
Thank you for the additional information. Thank you. I don't think there's, oh, yeah, yeah, Councilmember Bushy, go ahead.
Question for the director. What is your source of water that you use to recharge the lagoon?
Just bay water.
Oh.
We just, we just lower it and then raise it. It's all just the bay water, just so it's not the same bay water.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. If there are not any additional questions, I would entertain a comment and then a motion. Councilmember Kurtz, any comments? Councilmember Bushy? Okay, now entertain a motion on this item, please.
I move that we adopt the resolution confirming the engineer's annual report for the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District and the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 202425.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Thank you, Jonathan. Looks like you're on the next one as well. So the next public hearing is for the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District.
All right, well, thank you for having me back. We'll kick things off here. Same purpose for the public hearing, interested person, conclusion of the hearing may file matters of the engineer report. If a majority assessed persons protest against an increase to the assessment, any previous year exists, the proposed increase will be abandoned and majority protest has not been filed, city council may adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment, either as originally proposed or as changed. So background on this one, formed in 2011 to repair, maintain and really construct the medians across the eastern San Rafael edge along Point San Pedro Road, extends from San Rafael High School, the Biscayne Drive, and both includes, the unique part of this one is it includes both city and county properties. Here's an image of the assessment district. The proposed assessment for the next fiscal year, it's really split into two different parts. One part is the annual debt service, 5870. This is no longer going to be increasing, it's the same assessment amount as last year. We've reached the amount that we're able to project out a final payment for that debt service. I will note that the debt service is not assessed to every property because some properties elected to pay their full amount upfront. The other half of the assessment is the operations maintenance. This one does increase on a CPI factor each year to try to keep up with increased costs for labor and expenses. That'll be 5728. So the total assessment for the next fiscal year being proposed is $115.98. Here's a operations maintenance budget, estimated costs. You can see the vast majority of this is for contractual maintenance. We do contract out the median landscaping services, along with supporting with staff time. You can see the $11,050 for repair and irrigation repairs, that's a cross between the contractor and our own staff. And then the second biggest expense here is water, and then some supportive city staff time, and there's also a county fee. The public outreach, so we do continue to keep lines of communication open with the Citizens Committee for Point San Pedro Road Coalition Committee. They do receive updates from us and our Public Works, Public Parks Division Supervisor continues to work with them more closely, as well as he's the one that directly supervises the work of the landscaper. So at the conclusion of this, we have conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution ordering the levy of the assessments for FY 2425, or do not adopt the resolution, which will result in no levy of assessments for FY 2425.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'll turn to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Bushy?
One question, what's the county fee?
The county fee is for them to collect the taxes. So we tell them how much that needs to be collected, but they actually collect the taxes.
Okay, so it's more of a collection fee?
Yeah, yeah, it's a collection fee.
Okay, great, thank you.
They actually do pay in as well for the public benefit of, in that area.
Thank you. Just someone, you had an abbreviation up there, EBU. Could you just say for the public what that stands for?
Oh, Economic Benefit Unit, I believe, is what it's.
And what is that in regular language? Like what is, what are you counting with?
It's an equal way of projecting out the costs that you can then apply across all of everybody, if there was someone that had a larger parcel or a different size of the land that they would have to pay more into. So you're having a fair application, kind of like a cost per square foot type.
Okay, thank you. I will open up the public hearing on this item. If you have any comments to make, now is your chance on the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District. Not seen anyone, I will close the public comment and bring it back for additional comments. Councilmember Kurtz? Councilmember Bushy, how about you? This is in District 3, so anything you wanted to speak to before you make a motion on this item?
Just, I remember when we adopted this and it's been working really well. So I'm delighted that it's coming forward and if we're ready for a motion, I'm happy to.
Yes, please.
I move that we adopt the resolution confirming the engineer's annual levy report for the Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District and the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 202425.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Thank you, Jonathan. We have additional agenda items. The next one is response to the grand jury report on e-bike safety. We actually have two responses to the grand jury report. The first one will be on e-bike safety. And I see Chief Spiller has joined us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. This next item before you is our response to the grand jury report on e-bike safety. In, I guess I gotta put up my PowerPoint, sorry about that, before the clerk yells at me, let me get this long. Okay, let me try this again. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Thanks for having me. The issue that I'm going to present is our response to the grand jury report on e-bike safety. So the background on this, in April of this year, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury released a report entitled, "With Power Comes Responsibility: Youth Under Age 16 Operating Class II, Excuse Me, Class II E-Bikes: A Safety Risk." Quite a mouthful, but that's the, that's the title of the grand jury report. So the city is required to respond to the grand jury report. Penal Code Section 933, Section C, requires the governing body of this public agency to comment on the findings and recommendations enumerated in the grand jury report. This response is required within 90 days. Among the content of the report, the three main areas include noticeable increase in the number of e-bikes being operated by Marin youth as a major concern. Number two, Marin's e-bike accident rate for children ages 10 to 15 was five times higher than any other age group. There's some interesting data on the County of Marin Health and Human Services Dashboard that outlines some of the information on reported incidents, including injuries with bicycles and e-bikes. And then lastly, the report encourages municipalities to adopt ordinances placing age limitations on Class II e-bikes, along with helmet use. For context, a lot of what the report makes reference to is Class II e-bikes, so let me just share with you and those that are watching the three types of e-bikes. Type 1 e-bikes are pedal-assist-only cycles with no throttle control. It has a maximum assisted speed of 20 miles an hour. Type 2 e-bikes, which is at the center of a lot of the content of this report, type 2 e-bikes also have a maximum speed of 20 miles an hour but are throttle-assisted, which means a rider or an operator can simply throttle to their destination and not necessarily need to pedal. And then type 3 e-bikes are pedal-assist only with no throttle, but it has a maximum assisted speed of 28 miles an hour. Bikes in each of these categories are California legal and under 750 watts. Uh, bikes in each of these categories are California legal and under seven hundred and fifty watts. Uh, the grand jury report presents, uh, six specific findings. Uh, finding number one, uh, the increasing number of e-bike accidents involving youths in Marin under the age of sixteen presents a public health and safety danger in Marin. Uh, finding number two, the operation of class two e-bikes by persons under the age of sixteen uh, poses significant risk of safety, uh, not only of e-bike operators, but other bike riders, passengers and pedestrians on sidewalks, streets, uh, multi-use paths and trails within the county. And then finding number three, uh, the emergent, the emerging increasing safety issues related to class e-bikes. Um, the operators using them under the six, under the age of sixteen has not been addressed by the county or municipalities in a uniform manner. Finding number four, uh, for all practical purposes, the state of California has abdicated its responsibility uh, to regulate the use of class two e-bikes, leaving it up to the County of Marin and municipalities throughout the county uh, to create, to, uh, create their own regulations. Um, finding number five, the funding to continue e-bike specific safety and training programs through e-bike, e-bike smart Marin, uh, provided by the Marin County Bicycle Coalition is not sustainable without new sources of funding. And finally, finding number six, uh, the Marin County Public Schools are not currently able to implement additional bicycle safety training programs for students beyond what has been offered, uh, by the Safe Routes to School program for many years. The city's findings, or excuse me, the city's response to these six findings are as follows. Uh, staff, um, agree with findings number one, two, three, and four. As it relates to finding number five, um, and the e-bike safety and training program, uh, the city partially disagrees in that, uh, it's not within the realm of San Rafael's responsibility to agree or disagree with this finding. The Marin County Bicycle Coalition is a private nonprofit organization and the city has no administrative or programmatic control over the organization. Uh, and finding number six, our response, uh, Marin County Public Schools are not able to implement additional bicycle safety training programs. The city, uh, partially disagrees with this as well in that, um, it's not the city of San Rafael's responsibility to agree or disagree. Uh, this finding pertains to matters relating to Marin County Public Schools, which operate under their own control and respective legislative bodies. Uh, additionally, within the report, the grand jury, uh, has included four recommendations in the report. Number one, uh, by the end of the calendar year, the Board of Supervisors and each municipality in Marin should take necessary steps to adopt an ordinance with regard to the use of class two e-bikes. To include at a minimum that only people aged sixteen and older should operate class two e-bikes. Operators of class two e-bikes must wear helmets and all passengers on class two e-bikes must wear helmets as well. Uh, recommendation number two, again, by the end of the calendar year, the County of Marin and each municipality should take all steps necessary to establish a joint task force or committee and investigate, uh, potential coordination among, uh, organizations to, uh, adopt, uh, a uniform set of regulations regarding, uh, e-bike use within the County of Marin. Recommendation number three, uh, any task force or committee as described in the previous recommendation uh, should consider inviting representatives from county schools, law enforcement, public health officers and bicycle advocates, uh, to provide a more broad and diverse, um, input. And lastly, recommendation number four, by the end of this calendar year, the Board of Supervisors should explore options for additional funding for student and public education throughout Marin County about e-bike safety. So the city's response to, uh, these four recommendations, um, are as follows. Um, by the end of the calendar year, uh, the Board of Supervisors and each, each municipality should take steps necessary to adopt an ordinance. Uh, staff recommends more research and analysis before adopting an e-bike specific ordinance, uh, with, um, staff recommends, uh, a countywide task force be established, um, which, uh, was enumerated in recommendation number two. Uh, this will allow, uh, all of the stakeholders and representatives to discuss and develop uniform regulations, identify, uh, potential pitfalls and additional elements, uh, for enforcement. Uh, the city will work diligently with other jurisdictions to develop, uh, a countywide group. In fact, the Marin County Police Chiefs Association took this, uh, action up at our last meeting and have, uh, taken the action to form a working group. Uh, so that won't actually occur within the chief's meetings, but it'll occur as a, a self-standing working group to include not only chiefs, but, uh, school district representatives, um, uh, public health representatives and other, um, nonprofits. Recommendation number two, our response suggests, um, similar to what I just stated. The city agrees with the recommendation to, uh, to establish a joint task force and committee, uh, countywide working group, which, uh, will be initiated uh, under the auspices of the county chiefs, uh, will, uh, include the diverse representation for a better perspective on the content of a potential ordinance. Recommendation number three, uh, the task force or committee that is, um, is, is formed will have all of those, uh, diverse players, including schools, law enforcement, public health and bicycle advocates. The city agrees with this recommendation. Which brings us to recommendation number four. Last but not least, the Board of Supervisors should explore options for additional funding. This recommendation is directed to and pertains only to, uh, the control of the County Board of Supervisors. So the city doesn't have any recommendation and it does not require action from San Rafael. Uh, as I wrap up this brief presentation, um, the city is committed to working with partner agencies and organizations to develop uniform regulations, uh, for all e-bikes, particularly class two e-bikes and uh, we're committed to ongoing community education and engagement about the hazards and safe operation about e-bikes. While there are a few different, um, actions that are outlined in the staff report, uh, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the city of San Rafael's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury, uh, to comply with the legislative requirement to address this report. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Chief Spiller. Councilmember Kurtz, questions?
Thank you for the update and, um, thanks to the grand jury for doing the report. Um, I think we all receive so many questions and concern from community members about e-bikes and the differentiation around the e-bikes has been really confusing. Um, looking at the county dashboard, it's more than just younger riders. It's riders. It's all riders. And it's interesting to see those forty and above, the number of accidents as well, um, with e-bikes and other bikes. So in, in the work that you're doing with the other chiefs, are you looking at it across all ages and areas versus just the, because the report was really focused a lot with the younger group versus everybody.
Well, the recommendation from the grand jury is to address, uh, the concerns and the safety of youth. So that will be the focus of the work that the working group will do. Uh, there are some, you know, one of the recommendations says to include, uh, the helmet requirement for anybody in a class two e-bike, which is in conflict with the vehicle code. If you're over eighteen, you don't have to wear a helmet. If you're under eighteen, you do. So there's some things that are kind of incongruent. We have to, uh, you know, young, uh, if you're under eighteen, you know, twenty-one, two-one-two of the vehicle code says you shall wear a helmet. And we all know if we're out there riding a bicycle or e-bike, it's a smart choice whether we're over eighteen or under eighteen. So those, those legal, uh, incongruences will come up and that's what we're dealing with. But we're focusing on the operation of e-bikes with youth.
Great. Okay. And then another question in terms of the amount of communication that has been visible over the last, I'd say just fairly short, within the last six months. And I don't know when the report work was actually done. Are, are you starting to see a decline or is that we're getting out there?
I, I haven't seen a decline. You, you know, it's a little anecdotal. We don't have really good numbers or, or significant numbers on e-bike enforcement. And, you know, the collision data, there's no real separation between an e-bike and a regular bike. The report was published in, uh, April twenty-sixth of this year, so it's all pretty recent. Um, and, you know, it, the activity ebbs and flows in different communities throughout Marin County.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy. I just have one question and chief, I don't know if, if my question for you or for the city manager, I was surprised that the grand jury didn't ask any of the school districts to weigh in. So much of this was about public schools. So I don't know, one, could the school districts have been asked to respond? And then I guess in the conversation, maybe we're already addressing how they can be brought in. But I think that's surprising because they were really front and center in this document. So.
Yeah. So the grand jury is really talking to municipalities in the County of Marin, that not necessarily the school districts, but your police departments are, uh, talking with school districts. We're partnered with the school districts. Uh, one of the elements of the report, uh, cites, you know, funding available to schools for continuing or expanded, uh, safety programming while it's not necessarily identified. Your chief and my peers are working, uh, pretty aggressively and affirmatively with our school districts throughout the county to, uh, to partner in, uh, addressing these issues. You know, people who ride these bikes to school, the school is our best partner in terms of addressing those types of things, but nobody is better than mom and dad at home. Uh, so, you know, we all have a piece of the pie and, um, you know, as I offer this, your chief would like to partner with parents who are buying them and, uh, trying to educate their, their young people who are going to be operating them in the schools who, uh, where, where they'll be parked during the day and riding to and from. So we all have a little bit of, of, uh, of a piece of this pie.
Thank you. Hold on, we have one more question, then I'll turn to you. So we know that Supervisor Mary Second, as well as Assembly Member Damon Connolly have been working on this. Can you speak to how some of the advocacy they're doing at the state might affect this? Or is it kind of two parts of that same puzzle as it were, what we're doing locally and what's being at the state level?
Yeah. So as an example, uh, AB seventeen seventy-eight is, uh, Assembly Member Connolly's bill. Um, and you, you know, it's a, it's proposed as a pilot for Marin County, so it'll be a little unlike the rest of the state. But it will require us to all have those ordinances in order to, uh, to enforce, um, uh, class two e-bikes or actually any e-bike, uh, with young people. And the, what they'll be looking for is data um, in, in order to kind of make the case in, in the event that it's going to be proposed statewide after the pilot. Uh, as far as the county, I think the county is going to be responding to the grand jury, much like we will be.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, additional question?
Thank you for asking that question. That was one of the questions. Um, in the groups that you've mentioned reaching out to, does that also include retailers? In terms of the, getting the word out to them, are they not receptive?
Yeah, so, uh, some retailers are better than others. Um, you know, there are some who are less forthright and less, uh, direct in terms of what's legal, what's not legal and uh, how these divide, or how these, uh, bikes could be modified, uh, which is another real concern because these twenty, twenty mile an hour e-bikes can be modified. I'm not going to say how to do it, uh, but, you know, they can be modified and, uh, it's not, it would not be unusual to see uh, these things well in excess of, of twenty miles an hour, even the twenty-eight for a class three.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. There might be further questions that arise once we hear from the public. I will open the public comment on this item. If you would like to give input to the council, uh, now is your chance. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mamu Chirazi. I'm the second time candidate for the mayor of San Rafael twenty twenty-four. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Kate, uh, city manager and city, uh, attorney and the council member. Um, I've been in San Rafael for forty-six years and I have a story on downtown San Rafael for the last thirty years. I have seen, um, the sidewalk belong to the, uh, public basically walking a long time ago. And then we started seeing, uh, a bicycle, uh, showing up on, on the sidewalk. And, um, lately we, uh, see scooters coming on the sidewalk. And now we do have a e-bike, which is uh, uh, electrical, uh, apparatus that has to be, um, uh, ruled basically. Uh, I would like to know if, uh, that the city can, um, uh, basically grab this, uh, idea from the manufacturer's side or the wholesaler or, or the retailer. But obviously we can put some kind of a rule together and some kind of a resolution for the city because, uh, when I was driving the forty-five or thirty-five miles on, um, um, Wolf Grade, a, a electric bike just passed me, passed me when I'm doing thirty-five uphill. So these, these, uh, electric bikes are very dangerous. These are motorized apparatus and they need to be uh, uh, basically, uh, handled. There, there must be rules and regulations in town. So the drivers and, and, uh, and their insurance, uh, companies will be safe, basically, dealing with this kind of a, um, uh, accident.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hey, Michael Glazner, Michael Glazner, Blasner Navarro Street. Um, uh, e-bikes are motorcycles. Let's not, you know, let's, let's call it what it is. Um, so two hundred and seventy-five pound dude over sixty on a heavy e-bike coming at you. It's an experience you don't forget. Uh, he really can't control the thing. Before e-bikes, e-bikes, you rarely saw out of shape folks on the bike path. Now it's a regular thing. I've never felt afraid of some kid on an e-bike. It's the geriatric crowd that scares me. The young have better reflexes and better muscle tone. I'm guessing very few kids had a say in this reasoning. Um, it seems like ageism to me. The main danger that I experience on bike paths is the homeless encampments lining the Mayhem Creek Bike Path. You've got about four feet of path between the tents and the garbage.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on the response to the e-bike grand jury report? Welcome.
Hi, uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, so I volunteered at the Marin County Fair and I was there on some of those hot days. Thank you for coming out. Uh, I was volunteering at the bike valet. You know, I was just first newbie to it and, you know, want to be involved and support a good thing. And I actually found it pretty discouraging to do it again because I would, the vast majority of bicycles, uh, you know, people who went there that are listening to this, you know, use the bike valet, you know, use it or lose it kind of thing. But most of the bikes, I would say maybe sixty, seventy percent of the bikes in the bike valet, maybe understandably also were e-bikes. And I was like, you know, these people would be leaving, you know, after the fireworks. I'm like, where are you riding to? And they're like, I'm riding to Terra Linda. I'm like, wow, okay. So, um, the, the other thing is, um, in terms of enforcement, uh, just thinking back to my earlier days going to schools here is maybe put some sort of a enforcement officer at the bike racks at schools. Um, because then you actually know the kid was actually using it and, you know, that kind of thing. I don't know how you would age identify someone that young, but um, you know, just think about some of these schools and where the bike racks are. I think, I think that would be a one way to enforce for those young folks. Um, in terms of what he was saying about older folks, you know, just being a former commuter, you know, coming from San Francisco back here, you know, I, I really do like seeing older folks that, you know, usually I, I didn't see in decades past and they just, they're getting out there and they're getting after it again. It, you could tell it just really brings people back kind of thing. It's nice to see that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I speak as a lifetime cyclist who's never driven a car. Um, I do want to point out that the e-bikes are becoming increasingly problematic. Mostly because there's been no regulation and what little rules exist aren't enforced. Um, and a lot of this starts with the families that are buying these bikes for their kids. Um, you know, I don't, I never want to do a comparison of what it was like when we were kids because it was a different landscape. But I'm concerned about young people, um, going directly um, onto an electric bike, never having had an actual bicycle. And the skills that you learn on a real bike are critical for when you graduate onto something that has an actual engine. Um, most people who ride motorcycles have to get licensed. Uh, this is not something that happens with e-bikes. So you're taking very vulnerable kids um, whose brains aren't completely developed yet and don't have a sense of caution because they don't have the physical discipline that comes from riding a regular bike and learning your limits on that and learning reflexes. And you're immediately thrust by, shockingly, a parent onto a vehicle that has an electric motor. And with all onto a vehicle that has an electric motor. And with all due respect to the fact that they do have quicker reflexes, they also have less impulse control than, than older riders. So they're just as dangerous as the aforementioned, you know, six foot three, two hundred and seventy five pound guy who also has never ridden a bike before and doesn't know what he's doing on a bike. I mean, with that case, you have a lot of, you know, people moving directly from their Range Rovers in, onto an e-bike. And they have absolutely no perception of what it's like for regular cyclists to have to contend with that. Lastly, I just want to point out the roadkill has gone up because there's no time for animals to actually adjust to these faster speeds that are already on the bike paths. It's pretty sad. Our natural resources are important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Two things. One is a question. Again, this is unprocessed. So is the response to the grand jury report an attempt to solicit ideas that they may use to provide a unified plan? Are they saying of all the, you know, there's a lot of good ideas out there. Let's get all the information from the people who are closest to the problem, experiencing the problem or anticipate a problem. And then we will come up with a unified plan at the county level and maybe at the state level, even though they advocated their responsibility. Or is it, you come up with ideas and then you're on your own and take care of it. We don't want anything to do with it. So that does a question, which way are we going? Or, or is it up in the air as to where this will go? On a cultural level, I, I like the idea that people are using e-bikes or any device that's reducing emissions, getting cars off the road seem like a good thing to happen. And how to do that in a way that encourages safety as well as savings is, is really a question I don't really have a good answer to. And maybe that's also the objective of the grand jury's request. But I'm a lifelong bike sick list. And I have a scooter, so not quite an e-bike, but I know what it's like to ride on the road on a small vehicle or an unpowered vehicle, me powered vehicle. And I enjoy that. I would hate to see that diminished by law or draconian measures to say you can't do this, can't do that, do anything. So the kids will go find something else to have fun with. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone or close to public comment. And I will note that we did also receive an email from Bob Middlestat, who is part of a group, an advocacy group called e-bike access. So I see the chief is nodding his head that he has also seen that email, as I know the council did as well. So I heard some great input and I also heard some questions just around enforcement. So maybe you can just kind of give your thoughts on what that might be or what that might look like. The second was about the educational aspect of riding, which I think goes back to the school, but I, I'm curious how we might fold that in maybe to our answer, because I think that is a key part where the focus has been. And then the last question we heard was, how can people give input going forward on any proposed ordinance? I kind of reworded what you were saying. And what's Marin County's role in that? So again, just clarifying the process.
So let me see if I can remember each of those because I didn't write them down. I wrote something different down. So.
Well, you can answer your questions.
So from an enforcement perspective, you know, the first speaker talked about really rules of the road, operating on sidewalks and those types of things. So those rules of the road are are governed in the California Vehicle Code. And there are a lot of areas that we can leverage that code to address poor decision making or bad writing now. But part of the ordinance will allow us to uniformly, and I scribbled this down because the spirit of the working group is to be as consistent as we can throughout the county. Mill Valley has launched their, their ordinance, their e-bike ordinance. And there's a lot more conversation going on in Mill Valley. So they're a little bit ahead of us. But a lot of what they have captured is, you know, use on trails and those types of things. So the, the purpose of, of the working group really is to be consistent and uniform across the county as it relates to sidewalks, rules of the road and things like that. Some of that we could capture in the ordinance, proposed ordinance. Otherwise, we would rely on the vehicle code sections for that. There's another, another speaker talked about in the, an officer at the school. I, I do have concerns about police officer and youth interaction in this enforcement context, which is why I subtly appealed to parents and schools, I think, to rely on law enforcement solely to address the behavior issues and the, the dangerous riding conditions and those types of things. It, it puts our relationship building at a disadvantage if the first interaction with law enforcement is a young person getting pulled over by a cop or being chased by a cop, right? So, you know, while not ideal, we certainly have a role and that goes back to just a part of, of the pie. So the education that you spoke of, I think, allows the police department or the city to work with the school district and to create programs. Nevada, as an example, has a really good like certificate program for e-bike operators in conjunction with the school. We could create something like that, or we could create an element like that in the, in the working group as we work on a more uniform ordinance throughout the county. So I think I ramblingly addressed each of your issues in that.
Absolutely. And just maybe further clarify what would be the role of the county? I know they're answering a separate one, an additional finding or recommendation from the cities and towns. And the working group, I think you'll find that we're all very enthusiastic about that. So how does the county of Marin intersect with that?
Yeah. So I think the county itself or unincorporated areas will be a participant in the working group for enforcement, but they'll also, you know, as the, the board of supervisors may, maybe they want to identify funding, maybe they can, there's other areas that they can participate in in terms of the working group, but there's a lot of possibility.
And is the sheriff a part of the conversation as well?
Yeah. So the, the Marin County Police Chiefs Association includes the district attorney and the sheriff.
Yeah. Cause they actually, the sheriff's office wasn't asked to respond either. So I think the working group will start to get at all the different stakeholders.
I think the sheriffs would be part of Marin's response to this, the county, the board of supervisors.
That makes sense. Thank you, chief. I'll see if there are any other questions. Otherwise I'll have comments from my colleagues. Councilmember Kurtz, you go first.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think it's one of those situations that we're going to find very few people who say no. And I'm wondering, you know, at the time, were the same conversations had when people, we were talking about seat belts or car seats for children. And, and now you wouldn't think of getting into a car without a seatbelt. And it just happens over time. We can't wait. Right? Because there are some things here and I really, I love the idea of this group that's getting together. I'm really hoping with AB seventeen seventy eight, there is that uniformity really owned and driven through the county because our, our county is too small. I mean, for each jurisdiction to have its own set of rules will be crazy for everyone. So I think it does need to be a uniform policy. But no, it absolutely makes sense. Our, our response makes sense. And I do, I would like to also, as you're going through that process, just to keep into consideration, if there is a way we can make something more tangible for the retailers, whether it's sending out a piece of material with it or whatever it is. Kids wearing ski helmets now. I mean, it's, they're adopting it. It's getting there. So, but yeah, it's going to take some time, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
A couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank you, chief, for being ahead on this issue and bringing leadership to, to San Rafael. The responding to the civil grand jury is, happens after the fact and you're talking about things that are already happening. So that's what makes it so easy to, to respond. So thank you for doing that. One bit of input, I find myself in agreement with Ms. Chrisanti in that parents are a very key part of this. And so I heard you describe your interaction with the role of parents as subtle. I would suggest that you could be polite, but not too subtle in bringing forward that point. And finally, in the big picture, as a former member of a civil grand jury, I'd like to thank you for the timely and thorough response that was put together.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add my appreciation. We are all concerned about youth safety and e-bikes at the dashboard. We're really grateful to County Marin for showing the dashboard, having that data behind it. I also appreciated how in the report they talk about having public health officials. It is a public health issue. So having the working group bring in all these stakeholders and again, getting ahead of it. Because no one wants to be responding to an accident regardless of the age, but especially the youth for all the reasons that we've talked about. So we do meet with the schools on a regular cadence and this will be something, it has, it is something that we've been bringing up for the last two meetings and will continue to bring up. So they'll know that we're trying to have a uniform ordinance and to support the efforts that they're doing around parent education and, and school education. So this is a really nice foundational document to have those conversations. So thank you. A very thorough response. I, I hear agreement with the responses that have been provided. And so I would entertain a motion on this item, please.
Uh, let's see, I can take that. Adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report titled With Power Comes Responsibility. Youth's under age sixteen operating class two e-bikes, a safety risk.
Second, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries three zero. Thank you, chief. The grand jury has been very busy. We have another response to them. This one is on cyber preparedness. Welcome, Director Mooney.
Give me one minute while I get everything set up. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Mooney. I'm the director of digital service and open government and I am here following my colleague's presentation to give you another response to Marin County Civil Grand Jury. And I am also joined remotely by my colleague Marlon Sanchez. He is the VCIO for Xantreon, and I thought it made sense to bring him on board due to the nature of the conversation today, tonight. And the fact that I think if you have any detailed conversations following, questions following this presentation, that he'll be able to answer those for you. I'll do them to the best of my ability as well. So I'm going to try to be as efficient as possible in this, but I really, I wanted to take this opportunity, not just to enumerate what the report says, because a lot, a lot of that is in the staff report. I also want to take the opportunity to assure the council and the members of the city what we are doing here that isn't all detailed in the report. It's a great opportunity to do it. So to provide a background, in 2019, there was a significant rise in incidents and attacks in US cities. And that prompted the Marin County Civil Grand Jury to begin the investigation for the 2019 to 2020 Civil Grand Jury Report, Cyber Attacks: A Growing Threat to Marin Government. It was released in May 2020, but that work had begun prior to the pandemic. It was timely because once COVID nineteen hit us and the shelter in place orders happened, we found not just that everybody was sheltering in place and that remote work meant that many governments, businesses were subject to vulnerabilities and an increase in attacks, which prompted President Biden in May 2021 to release Executive Order fourteen zero two eight on cybersecurity, increasing the awareness and the capacity for government in general to be focusing on cybersecurity needs. In 2024, Marin County Civil Grand Jury released their report in May, cybersecurity, cyber preparedness, are we there yet? And the key consideration here is that cities and counties are targets, even small cities, smaller cities like San Rafael. We hold a lot of personal and financial data. We have seen an uptick in remote work since COVID nineteen, which means that our systems are potentially more vulnerable. And in many cases, smaller cities have fewer IT resources. And so that increases the, the target on cities' backs for ransomware, phishing, social engineering and viruses, so that bad actors can take advantage of that lack of resources. We've seen it here in the, just in the last two years, some higher profile targets or higher profile ransomware and hacking that has occurred in February twenty twenty three in Oakland. San Bernardino County down south had a significant attack. I won't enumerate all these cities, but what's happened typically in these cases is that we have ransomware or virus attacks that result in network outages, release of sensitive personal information, including social security, numbers of, of staff. And it can take weeks and months to recover. And many times that ransom is the expectation of millions of dollars that need to be paid out. And in the case of San Bernardino County, they ended up paying out one point one million dollars to what has been deemed a Russian backed attack, a Russian hacking organization. In this case, San Bernardino County was on the hook for five hundred thousand dollars and, and their cyber insurance covered the rest. There's an additional fallout with, with the release of personal identical information where, in the case of Oakland, you had claims against the city being filed by represent, representatives from labor unions. So all of that is to say that, you know, that there is, there's a there there. There's a reason why the civil ground jury is, is focused on this. And I don't want to, I'm not going to enumerate the entire report. I have this slide here with a couple of bullet points that show the major discussion items, but the key, the key focus of the conversation, and I'll go into the recommendations and the findings in a minute, is looking at Marin Department's Information Services and Technology, otherwise known as IST, and their role, not just as a custodian of the IT needs and resources for the county, but also as a major coordinating body for the, for all the, all the regional agencies, including, they developed, following the 2020 cybersecurity report, the Marin Security and Privacy Council, which helps to coordinate best practices with towns and cities in, in the region. Like, like San Rafael, a number of other cities rely on third party providers of IT. And so the report looked into like, what is that scope of services? How is it related to cybersecurity? And how can we guarantee business continuity through that? Including best practices for cybersecurity, cybersecurity plans, leveraging risk pool for cybersecurity insurance. And then finally, there was some recommendations, a lot of the recommendations in this report, very specific to the board of supervisors and the county, including the recommendation to look into a joint power authority to support cybersecurity for coordination and awareness with towns and cities in the county. And also recommendation of looking at the collective bargaining agreements at the county. The key findings, you know, I, I don't want to read them all word for word. They're in the report, but the bullets are here. As I kind of reinforced here, the, some of the key findings that supported the recommendations are acknowledging that, that, you know, IT services should have a, should have a contract that's, that includes business continuity language. And it should be up to date. That towns and regions and agencies should be relying on these cybersecurity risk pools to both increase best practices, do audits, and then ultimately be a resource in the case of an attack. They're recommending, or they're finding that an adopted cybersecurity plan will increase your security posturing. It acknowledges that joint powers authorities are a method through which the Marin County can leverage resources and multiple agencies can coordinate better through the, through those JP, otherwise known as JPAs, joint power authorities. And they also had a finding on the impact of collective bargaining agreements within Marin County Department of IST, Information Services and Technology negotiations to support a third party IT services. The recommend, now there, as I mentioned before, there were a number of recommendations in the report. They're specific to the board of directors. I want to just focus on the ones here that were specific to San Rafael. One was a recommendation that agencies should require a current executed agreement within the last five years. And it has business continuity language. Now, we currently have that business continuity language and we bring that agreement with Xantreon to you. and we bring that agreement with Xantreon to you every year. So we're keeping that updated. We agree with that. Oh, and I'm sorry, I did skip the fact that we agree with all the findings here, except for finding six, only because we said we slightly disagreed because we felt it was not in the realm of the city of San Rafael to, the, the city of San Rafael to. And so the finding, I'll read it to you, just, just so you know. It says that the current county collective bargaining agreements prevent the Marin County Department of Information Services and Technology from unilaterally negotiating managed service agreements, outsourcing work to third parties. We partially disagreed with that only because we felt that that's not in the realm of our control or the scope of what the city of San Rafael does. That is the business of Marin County. So, sorry, let's go back on that, wanted to clarify that. My, my predecessors did such a good job of going quickly. So pardon me if I'm going too fast, but recommendation six A and B, they said that all Marin municipalities should take steps to acquire a .gov or .ca.gov domain and then formulate and adopt a plan for rolling that out. This was part of AB 1637, which was passed in 2023, signed by Governor Newsom. And while I, I agree that adopting a .gov domain would establish trust and it's a good idea. One of the challenges that we have with this is that it's an unfunded mandate. And California League of Cities has seen costs of up to $600,000 or more that, to make this change. So we will be taking the steps to acquire that domain and then making a plan, you know, over the, to meet the deadline of the 2029 to, to make that change. But basically what that means is, you know, every, every login that we have, all of our servers, all that technology, the websites, everything that is currently tied to our domain, cityofsanafel.org, that needs to be changed. And so there's costs in not just in coordinating with third parties to do that, but, but like, we have to, you know, completely change all, all of those systems to then align with that new domain. So there's some costs there. And so that, that planning is going to have to include an understanding of how we're going to pay for that. And I'm also kind of holding out the, that maybe some other cities who are going to go through this are going to go back to the state and acknowledge, find some way to acknowledge that this is an unfunded mandate. All right. I wanted to take a moment to, as I said, talk about some of the cybersecurity measures that we're doing here at the city of San Rafael, that some of this is enumerated in the staff report, but also to get out in front of some of the questions that you all may have about what we're doing. You know, we do have an annual cybersecurity awareness training program. And thanks to Councilmember Bushy, we had a little brief conversation about this. You know, we are, have audited the users and using this opportunity to revisit with departments to make sure that we have a program in place to enforce the, that our staff are taking this and we're getting high participation rate. We have an equipment replacement program that keeps aging machines, both PCs and servers, up to date. We're managing patches. Patches basically are when vulnerabilities are evident, that we patch those systems as soon as we hear about them and we keep things updated. We're regularly monitoring all of our systems. We have onboarding and offboarding procedures to make sure that people come in or leave the organization, that there's a little to no gap in the time that they have any access to, to our systems. We have multi-factor authentication and single sign-on. So that basically, you know, for these days, kind of everyone is subject to that. You know, verifying your, the identity of the person trying to sign in, that really is a strong reinforcement to ensure that the people who are accessing our systems are the people who they say they are. We have password complexity and rotation policies. Maybe frustrating when you're asked to change your password and it can't be the last password. But ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, if your password is ABC123 for everything, including your bank account, that might be a problem. So we do that to try to make sure that we're keeping these systems difficult to access. And we're encrypting data. We have backups. I'm sorry, there's a long list of stuff, but I'll make this report available to anyone who's at, who needs it. We have endpoint detection and response, as well as an inventory. Endpoints are like all the entryways from the internet that people can get into our network. And a very important thing is we have network segmentation as well as segmentation of our PCs. What that means is that, let's say, my PC gets hacked, someone comes into my PC, they're not going to be able to get into the network. Or if someone gets into a certain part of the network, they're not going to be able to get to another part of the network. All IT credentials are privileged. Our public safety team is using mobile device management, which allows us to have strong control over that very sensitive data they have. And the last, and since I've come on board, we've installed two important updates to our security, which is the Security Event Incident Management and Disaster Recovery Environment, which allow us to more quickly discover when there's an intrusion and also recover our systems more quickly. I'm almost done. The, we have three solid partners, including that Marin Security and Privacy Council, which is led by Marin IST. We have, and that's a regional group. We have a state group known as MESAC, the Municipal Information Systems Association of California. They also lead best practices around cybersecurity throughout the state. And then finally, on the national level, we're in coordination. We have a point of contact with the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, known as CISA. They help to notify agencies if there is a breach or that they know about a breach that maybe our systems have become aware of. And so we, we are in communication with all these three groups and sharing best practices. And, you know, what, I am prepared, although I don't need to go into it, but I just wanted to let you know that we do have an incident, incident response plan, not that it has been approved by council, but for priority one intrusions. The, our Xantreon team, which can go into more detail, has a specific plan and approach to how to ensuring that the person who first notifies it is, maintains the lead on notifying everyone and ensuring that the, that the vulnerability is being attended to. Then we have a number, and then that is passed on ultimately to our team, who will then communicate up, depending on the level of severity, to, to leadership and if necessary, to our insurance company. We do have the, the SIM, the Security Event Event and Incident Management System, allows us to track any intrusions that come in. So that, that we've put in the last year is that it will significantly save time for us to close those gaps before we recover environments. And sometimes that's what takes a lot of time for folks. So currently and upcoming, what we're going to be doing is we're actually doing some work with our public safety network regional partners. We've acknowledged some, some security opportunities to improve our coordination with public safety networks. And we're tightening up that security. We're putting together a cybersecurity framework and incident response plan that includes some policies for governance, risk, and compliance. And then we'll be planning for that compliance with AB 1637. So after all that, what we're asking you to do is to approve our, our recommendations to Civil Grand Jury. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Director Mooney, and welcome, Marlon. We appreciate you zooming in. I will turn to my colleagues for questions. I'll go to Councilmember Bushy first.
I could ask you thousands of questions about cybersecurity. But I'm going to focus instead on the Civil Grand Jury's report and ask you one question. Do you agree with their requirement that there be a, an outsourcing or a third-party contract for cybersecurity services?
So I think what they're saying more specifically is that if you're using third-party IT services, that you should have a contract. And specifically, an up-to-date contract. Now, and maybe I'm misreading that, because I, I think that, I, speaking from my experience here at the city of San Rafael, I think that actually the Xantreon team has been a phenomenal asset to the city of San Rafael. And I think that they are able to do things at scale that would be much harder for the city of San Rafael to do. I think that depending on the size of an agency and the expertise therein, it may be hard to find a third-party contract that's going to, a third-party company that's going to be able to, to provide the same level of service that some, that, that a staff, a fully-staffed IT agent, IT group could do. So, I mean, my colleagues, I don't, I have not worked at the county and I, and while we have some coordination, you know, I, I mean, I think that they're a fully capable team over there. And I wouldn't believe that they would need to be supplanted by a contractual managed service provider. But I think that for those agencies that are using cybersecurity or using managed service providers for IT, that having a contractual language that really secures the continuity of service and that outlines the responsibilities of that service provider to guarantee that business continuity is, is important.
That's super helpful, because I read the question completely differently. I thought that they were advocating for, on external resources. So that's, that's great. I'm confident that the city attorney agrees that there should, all contracts should be written. And so that's, and that's good. But that leads me then to a question for Mr. Sanchez. As, as has been explained, there's opportunities to scale by going, going outside. Those opportunities to scale also apply to attackers. Why are we better off having an outside entity such as yourselves having access to our system and, I presume, many, many other systems?
Yes, there's definitely a risk to that. Obviously, we are a, our managed service provider is our prime target. You only need to compromise the managed service provider to compromise, you know, all of their clients. So there is, there is a risk there, and we are well aware of that risk. And we try to mitigate those risks by implementing higher level of, of security programs within Xantreon, so that in the event that one of our accounts or one of our systems get compromised, we have segmented everything in such a way that it minimizes the risk to the entire client base. So that's how we are trying to approach it, reducing the attacks surface by segmenting everything so that in the event of any customer identity get compromised, the, kind of the blast surface is small.
That's what I was hoping you'd take. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I think, yes, the responses to the report is great. The report is great. I'm concerned that as soon as the report's published, it's already old, because there's so many bad actors out there right now in, in this space. I mean, we saw Patelco just this, this week, going to have a ransomware attack. And so how, how frequently are we looking at updates in terms of the work we need to do around cybersecurity? And do we feel like we're, is it like an ongoing or?
I'll start and then I'll let Marlon add on there. So it's funny, because I always kind of say to my team and all of our colleagues that the, our work, our work on, in this space is a balance between security and usability, right? We could be Fort Knox, but then it's going to be harder for everyone to do their work. We're very fortunate that we have on the backend, we have a dedicated team within Xantreon. They have a, a security operation center that, known as a SOC. And they're monitoring all of the updates that need to happen, all of the patches that need to happen. So it is, that work is going on every day and it never stops. The ongoing education, the conferences. Where it's fortunate is that because the Xantreon team has dedicated resources to that, the digital team is able to like augment and our other needs around the city. But that's also why one of the, our upcoming projects in the, both the policy and the plan work that we're planning to do, our recommendation is, you know, looking at, hey, if we, if there is a, if there is a, an attack, we need to define as a city, how quickly do we demand that that, that we are back up? And then what are the resources we need to put in place? We need to have a, a, a fully flushed out plan. I feel very confident where we are now, but we can always get better in getting that plan together. But then there needs to be, part of that plan needs to be a revisiting of every year. Hey, here's everything we said we were going to do. Here's everything we have. Is this still accurate? And how are we constantly keeping that up to date? So we're very fortunate to have a very capable team over at Xantreon, who's keeping on top of all of this, and they're constantly doing this work. Marlon, do you want to add anything?
Sure, I'll just add that there is a dedicated security team at Xantreon that is responsible for kind of providing guidance to all of our clients regarding best practices and implementations and explaining the pros and cons of implementing any type of security. Because security is always a trade-off, as Sean just said, between usability and, and improving security. So I feel that our security team does a good job of it. They constantly provide guidance on will be shipping implementing. That's their, essentially, that's their job. Somebody dedicated to looking at the security landscape and providing recommendations. And there are minimum standards that if Xantreon is going to be a take on an activity as a client, they have to meet some of the standards of security. If we're going to take them as a client, we, we require a certain set of thresholds for us to probably, to reduce the risk. So I feel that Sean and I and the digital team meet regularly to discuss ongoing security improvements through our yearly planning and roadmapping. You know, what's coming next? What can we, you know, turn the lever, the level up on regularly? We have those meetings and Sean does a great job of making sure to provide the team space that focus, not on the, you know, day-to-day great fix stuff, but to also plan on how can we improve security in the city and reduce the risk to, to services and any cyber.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one question. I know you went through really quickly.
Yeah.
But could you speak to the insurance part? I was, one of the findings, and I know you went through all of them, but I think it's an important one, especially given your comment around San Bernardino.
Yeah, thanks. So one of the findings, oops, let me go back up here. One of the findings within the report is that, it's a, is that insurance risk pools both reduce the risk for cities and agencies because they both provide audits. And ultimately, as in the case of San Bernardino, they can help offset the cost of, of a ransom. You know, we're talking about $1 million for the city of San Rafael not to be totally on the hook for that. So we do, we are, do participate in a risk pool for cybersecurity as part of our joint. I'm going to get the, I'm going to get the acronym wrong. It's a C, if there's a C and there's a J in it, and there's an R, and there's a P, and there's an M and an A.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, they're, they're a resource for both like auditing and best practices. And ultimately, one of the things, and we're very fortunate now to have a risk manager on board, who I've already been in conversations about this, is that like, like, what are the threshold at which we need to engage with them should an attack occur? And so that's part of our game plan that we're, we're going to be formalizing also as part of this cybersecurity plan.
Thank you, thank you for continuing to expand on that one bullet point. The other question in terms of the findings and the whole .gov conversation. And so that is a requirement, an unfunded mandate, as you pointed out, by the state. And the unfunded mandate actually gives a deadline of 2029. And I see that in the response, we agree with ultimately getting there. And it seems to me, and I just want to ask for your clarification, that we're saying, yes, by the end of 2024, we will be putting things into place to actually have it done by 2029. But we're not completing it by then because of the dollar signs. Was it 600,000, 800,000 big dollars? So do you feel, so one, do you feel we should be communicating that the timeline for us, yes, we're going to be putting it in place, but we're actually not going to even start really doing it until years from now?
So I think within, within, as I, when I first read, when I first read it, I was like, wait, you guys expect this to do by 2024, you know? And I, when I looked at it again a second time, what they're saying is that you, we should take all the steps to obtain the domain, which is not as easy as going on to a domain service and just buying a .gov. There's a, there's a process through which they verify that you're actually a government agency. So we are going to start the steps of obtaining that gov. And the other thing is that they've said to make a plan by the end of 2024 to do it. And so when I look back at it, I said, that's totally plausible and is within our, already our strategic work plan within digital to do that work. But I did include the language to reinforce the fact that, hey, this is an unfunded mandate, you know? And I think that, I'm not sure at what point, what those conversations are happening at the state level to acknowledge that this is going to have an impact on cities.
I don't think they'll provide any funding for it. So all the more reason for us is we're looking over the years to come that we're either putting money aside to get everything that's needed to fund it and, and pay for all this. But that would be part of the plan, I take.
Yes, exactly.
Fantastic. Thank you for that presentation. We brought off the opportunity for our community to weigh in. I will open up the public comment on the grand jury report, Cyber Preparedness. If you would like to comment, now is your opportunity to comment on this report. Welcome.
Good evening.
When I was in IT, they said the only way to secure your computer was to unplug it. I don't think that's changed. But more seriously, given that you have such sophisticated tracking systems, I wondered how many attacks you've experienced? How many have actually succeeded or failed or somehow been detected in a particular way? I assume you get reports like this all the time. Or is it so small that this is a just in case situation? You, you don't, you want to prevent an attack because you want to never have to say you've been attacked? I guess those are the two questions I have. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? Not seeing anyone, we will close the public comment. You had a question posed to you. I don't know if you want to give out that information. I'm not sure what the protocol is.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
I'd like, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, in, under my tenure, that nothing has happened. There was a minor, one of the reasons that we got in touch with CISA was that they had noticed that we had, there was a minor vulnerability on one of our systems. It was nothing that, it was a system, it was a edge switch without getting too deep into the language of the technology. It, an edge switch that is segmented and far away from the central network that had been pinged basically by a known actor, so to speak. Nothing, there was no intrusion. It was merely that like in their, in their, the federal government search, they acknowledged this and we had actually also acknowledged it. And so we were able to close and patch that. There was no vulnerability that, nothing actually went into our system. There's no action taken on our system. And we've since, you know, been able to kind of go back and post any sort of incident, whether it's a, you know, in this case, it was a, an attempted attack or anything that like does go wrong. The Xantreon team has a post incident report and we kind of go over everything and they have a game plan to what they're going to do next. And so we did, following that incident, we, we followed up to kind of say like, how did this vulnerability happen? How did we miss that? We were very fortunate that nothing happened, but at the same time, i- if the system had been compromised, it wasn't going to actually get a chance to get into any, any of the network. So I'd like to be able to say, nothing's ever happened on my watch. But I'd rather be honest with you.
Thank you, no, we appreciate that answer. I will turn to my colleagues for additional comments and then a motion, additional comments, Councilmember Bushy.
No comments.
Okay, additional comments?
I'll just say thank you for responding to this. I, we, we can tell by your response that we are deeply invested in this, in this issue and have been for a long time. I know we can all personally attest that we are taking those security trainings. And just so the community knows, they actually send out, Xantreon sends out ones where they're phishing employees to test us to see if we fall for it. So I thought that was incredibly clever, but I did know it was a phishing one. So, but, so we really appreciate you, Xantreon, for really building out the capacity that we have here. Sean and his team, you do an incredible job of keeping all the data and government functioning day to day and keeping it safe and having a partnership with Xantreon is really critical to that. So I think we'll have a great answer for the grand jury on this one. It seems that my colleagues are in agreement what, what is proposed. So I would ask for a motion to make it official.
I'll make a motion, adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled, Cyber Preparedness. Are we there yet?
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you, Director Mooney. The next item on our agenda is proposed update to master fee schedule, specifically childcare. Let's see. Welcome, Director Navazio.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, members of the council. As, as noted, this agenda item seeks council approval of a resolution to authorize an update to the master fee schedule specifically to establish childcare program rates for the 24, 25 fiscal year. Summarizing briefly, as noted in the staff report, as you know, the city provides childcare program. Generally speaking, the program is fully cost covered by fees charged to program participants with the exception of some subsidized programs provided through the school. Council has for a while maintained a policy of, of having this program be fully cost covered through the fees. Back in December of 2022, the city adopted a kind of a comprehensive update to its master fee schedule, which covers most, if not all, of the fees and charges that the city charges for programs and services. As part of that document, it authorizes increases annually in the fees based on a Bay Area CPI with the idea that the CPI would generally account for cost increases. In this particular case, in part because it's been some time since those fees were set. Also, you have an item later on in this evening's agenda related to the memorandum of understanding with the bargaining group representing our childcare program employees. So this item has been prepared to address the fact that absent specific council action, the CPI was about 2.3% for the index period that is authorized under the fee schedule. However, a fee increase going into the 24, 25 school year of 9% is required in order to maintain the revenues to support the program. I think we would note that this isn't simply a math exercise, but there's the real purpose and intent behind this is to be able to, through the agenda item we have later on, on your agenda, to make sure that the city has the ability to recruit and retain the high quality staff that we rely on to maintain the level of childcare services that the city provides. And so, she's Craig Verne from the Library and Recreation Department, assisted in preparing this report. And essentially what's in front of you is the recommendation to do a couple of things. Adjust the fees accordingly for a 9% increase for the academic year. There's also some cleanup to the existing fee schedule to address some fee structures that are no longer current or, or needed. And I think I'll just leave it with that, other than perhaps to say that staff will be coming back to the council later on, a couple of months, with additional master fee schedule updates. But there's an urgency of this item, given the start of the school year and the need to have these rates in place prior to us bringing you some potential additional fee adjustments. I'll leave it right there.
Okay, thank you, Director. I'll look for questions. Councilmember Kurtz? Councilmember Bushy, question?
Yeah, go ahead. My questions are not about the addition and increases. My questions are about the subtractions. It appears to me that all these eliminated services will completely lock in, in, in order for a child to go to childcare services, that child must be, must be in one of these basically full time programs. And it has been some time, but there was a time when I had two children in these programs and the flexibility was essential to how I lived my, how I was able to, to continue. So help me understand why getting rid of this flexibility and requiring these. I mean, i- i- if I'm reading this right, a parent would have to be in, the child would have to be in full time care, right? There's no, there's, there's no drop in, there's no part time.
Hi Craig, welcome Craig. He has an answer for you.
Thank you, Craig.
Yes.
Yeah, hi there, Madam Mayor, Council. Craig Verme, Assistant Library and Recreation Director. The, the fees that you see in the existing fee schedule are essentially relics. I think you're referring to what we call the drop in fees. Historically in the past, we have offered some drop in programs as part of our after school program. In recent years, we have not offered that as an option as a drop in. We have a variety of different fees that we work with parents to provide as much flexibility as we can. But given the structure of our program, we also need to maintain certain ratios, certain staffing requirements. So we do need to understand how many participants will be in our program on a day to day basis. You'll see in the fees, we have some different options for kindergarteners to do three day programs, four day programs. And we do have, you know, some flexibility during certain times of the year. But we do have some requirements that we need to align with. And so for planning purposes, we've tried to create a structure that works for most parents. So we, we do not, at this point in time, we do not have a drop in program where someone could kind of come and go on a day to day basis if they chose to.
Well, it sounds like it's a good thing my children have grown. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I don't have any myself, so we'll see if any members of the public have any questions or comments. So I will open up the public comment for a proposed update to the master fee schedule, specifically childcare. If you'd like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone, we will close the public comment. Bring it back for additional comments prior to a motion.
I'm ready to put in a motion when you are.
Okay, why don't we go ahead? I'll just, again, thank you to the finance team for looking at this. We do have the underlying policy and you mentioned it in your report, but I just want to highlight our undermining, our underlying policy is having these be self sustaining in that it's not a broader subsidy by all of the city of Centerville. So the people who are using this service are the ones that are paying for the service. So that maintains this policy. And now that Councilmember Bushy knows that this reflects how it's been in recent years. So our parents today will have already accommodated these changes in terms of the elimination one. So.
Yes.
So thank you for your work and I, yeah, go ahead with the motion.
Yes, I'm sure my children would agree with you entirely that I'm hopelessly out of date. I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing an update to the master fee schedule to establish childcare program rates for the 2024, 25 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you, Director. And that is like the hot seat today. We are having, okay, next item, salary and benefit plans for temporary employees. Welcome, Director.
I'm going to say a few opening remarks.
Sorry, that's okay.
Thank you. No problem. We've hit a milestone tonight and the agendas on, in this packet represent the final successor MOUs of our labor negotiations process. So I won't be presumptive about the outcome of any of these. However, I felt like it was important to acknowledge the energy and effort and time that it takes to go through this process with 10 collective bargaining agreements in a matter of months and to do this all in time for July 1st implementation and some of the public safety, actually June 1st implementation. So it, this can't happen without the dedication and commitment of our team. And I say our team, that's the labor management team, that's the staff that participate as union stewards, that's our, the support from the city attorney's office, from our outside counsel. But in particular, I want to call out Marissa, Paul, the, the whole HR team, Nick and Sylvia. Angela, who led the effort this round, did an incredible job. I, I can't name all the people because we need to move on. But it's a really remarkable accomplishment that I'm very proud of and getting ourselves as a city, as an employer, in a place where we are competitive and the labor market was a huge goal of this run of, of labor negotiations. It always is, but it was a, a tough one to hit. And I think we did a phenomenal job getting us in a, in a better place to be competitive. So.
Thank you, Director Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, Council, Marissa Sanchez, Human Resources Director. The item before you tonight includes three resolutions pertaining to the salary and benefits for our temporary employees. So we're onto this group now. As you may know, the city utilizes a variety of positions to deliver city services. So we have temporary employees, seasonal employees. We have employees that come in in a fixed term capacity to serve and help with a specific project, maybe work on a special program for a duration of time. And we, we have five types of positions or classifications that, that make up this group. So as I mentioned, we have temporary employees, seasonal employees, retirees. We have our exempt fixed term and our non exempt fixed term. And that's what's been covered under the existing salary and benefit plan. So because of the significant differences in the nature and the level of work performed by these classifications, the different difference in work hours that are required, the different levels of benefits that are provided, staff is recommending that we establish separate salary and benefit plans to more clearly distinguish between the employment status and benefits for these groups. So we do have some recommended changes that is consistent with the economic guidelines that you have authorized. The first is, as, as Christine had mentioned, we, we've made some significant progress in terms of making salary adjustments to make us more, more equitable, make us more marketable in terms of attracting and retaining employees. We've done that with our, most of our bargaining groups and hopefully by the end of today, we'll be with all of them. But with that, we have with our temporary seasonal and our fixed term and non fixed term, we need to make some adjustments to these groups as well. And the goal, the goal is and has, has always been to try to align those positions that are in our regular positions, that are represented by bargaining groups, align them as much as we can with, or align these temporary seasonal and fixed term positions as much as we can with those regular positions. So after evaluating these particular positions, there are a number of classifications that need to make, we need to make adjustments to their salary ranges so they can be more closely aligned with the regular positions. So rather than list all of those, they are, they are outlined there in the staff report. In addition, we have one, one classification that we have not used for a number of years and do not intend to use. That's the clerical temp classification. So we're recommending to remove that from the salary schedule. And then we have a number of classifications that just have been historically hard to fill, both on the regular side, in terms of regular positions, but then also similar classifications that are temporary and seasonal. So recognizing those, we need to get ahead of that. And in looking at our, I don't want to say our competition, but our neighbors that have similar programs and are trying their hardest to attract and retain qualified individuals to serve in these critical positions that we need, we're trying to be as competitive as we can. So we are making recommendations based on that as well. And Catherine and Craig were here. I know that they're super excited about us bringing this forward because a lot of those classifications fall within their operation. Additionally, we are recommending changes to the, the city's contribution towards health and dental contributions for our exempt fixed term and non fixed term employees. So for our exempt fixed term positions, those are typically positions that are at a managerial level, performing for a limited amount of time, sometimes a couple of years. It just depends on the special project that they're working on or the program. But what we are recommending is that we increase their monthly flex dollar allowance to be consistent with what's being offered to all city of Centerville employees, regular employees in their successor collective bargaining agreements. And for our non exempt fixed term employees, we're recommending that we increase the health contribution, well, the contribution to $950 a month to be applied towards their health and dental premiums. In addition, we have a few non economic items that I mentioned with other bargaining groups. One is to incorporate gender neutral language throughout the salary resolutions as needed. Also to add language for bereavement leave to comply with the changes to state law. And then finally, to update the number of holidays for fixed term employees to align with those positions, those regular positions and MOUs. So the fiscal impact, the costs associated with these recommended salary changes and benefit adjustments is estimated to be within a range of 150,000 to 200,000 per fiscal year. All city departments have sufficient funds in their budgets to absorb this and will include any adjustments in budget proposals for ongoing costs for future, for future fiscal years. So with that, staff is recommending that you adopt all three resolutions as it's broken down into the different groups. So we have our first group of the temporary seasonal retiree, our second group of our non exempt, non exempt fixed term employees, and finally, our third group is our exempt fixed term employees. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. No question. Councilmember Bushy, no? Councilmember Kurtz? No, that was an excellent report. I don't have any questions either, but the community might. Now I will open up the public comment. If you have any input or questions regarding this item, now is your chance. Now I will open up the public comment. If you have any input or questions regarding this item, now is your chance. Not seen anyone, I will close the public comment. And just second what the city manager said in terms of the collective bargaining, the team on both sides, to have this timing be when it is, where it's still in July, and to the thoughtfulness of how do we have a salary schedule? How do we, something that is competitive to you said, you didn't want to say competitors, but hey, let's be frank. We don't want the cities taking our fantastic employees. So this will really enable us to remain competitive. So unless there are additional questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. It actually looks like I'm city clerk, three motions. Okay, so Councilmember Bushy, why don't you start? Then we'll just.
I move that we adopt the resolution rescinding resolution number 15020 and establishing a salary and benefit plan for temporary seasonal and retiree employees.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three to zero. Next motion, Councilmember Kurtz.
Resolution establishing a salary and benefit plan for non-exempt fixed term employees.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Councilmember Bushy, go ahead.
I move that we adopt the resolution establishing a salary and benefit plan for exempt fixed term employees.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we still have some more. The next item in the same vein, but different group, the successor memorandum of understanding with the Service Employees International Union Local 1021 is the next item. Director Sanchez.
Thank you. So as, as you mentioned, it is a resolution approving the successor MOU with SEIU Local 1021 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. I'll highlight a few of the significant economic items that there are outlined in the staff report. First is having to do with the salary for this term. So for each year, we are, we are going with a 3% general wage increase. In addition, a nine percent, up to a 9% equity adjustment for year one, and it's dependent on the position. Again, this, this has to do with comparing our external market data and where these positions lie in the market. For year two, we're looking at up to a 3% equity adjustment and the same for year three. So for a total increase for year one, it would be depending on the position, anywhere between 5 and 12%. For year two, it'd be anywhere between 4 and 6%. Same thing with year three, between 4 and 6%. Employees will receive an increase in their monthly flex dollar allowance. For employee only, the rate is increasing to $950. And for the family rate, it's going up to $2,400 per month. The bilingual pay will be increasing from $150 to $250 per month. We have approximately 21 employees in this bargaining group who are benefiting from this bilingual pay incentive at this time. The safety allowance is increasing from $200 to $400 per month. The life insurance, this, this was a very important item to SEIU. They're very pleased with this. The life insurance is going from $5,000 to $20,000 in the event that someone loses, an SEIU member loses their life. We have some, we have a total of 14 non-economic items and I'm not going to go through each and every one of them. But one, one thing that I do want to mention in here is that there is language that officially consolidates the two MOUs. You may recall that we had, we previously had an MOU with SEIU childcare. We've consolidated that into the general SEIU MOU. So now we have one that is representing the entire group. Again, the term of the agreement is three-year term and the contract costs are a total of $7,692,872. And this is being reflected in the city's fiscal year 2425 budget as well as updated budget projections. So at this point, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution approving the successor MOU pertaining to the compensation and working conditions with SEIU Local 21, 2020, or 1021. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. Any questions? Yep, no, no, seeing no questions, I will open up the public comment on this item. If you would like to comment or have any questions yourself, now is the opportunity to do so. Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comment and bring it back for additional comments. And then a motion, additional comments from my colleagues. I'll just say again gratitude, as the city manager stated in the beginning, and I know, I guess it's the last one, the last MOU on this. There's been many, many months of work and I'll look over here to our Assistant City Manager, Robinson Pignon. Thank you for your leadership on this and again for having, being, being here. We really value our employees, these are contracts. I believe that, we believe that the city really stretched ourselves to recognize the value and the importance of our staff. And we are delighted that this is the last MOU that we will be discussing for three years, provided there's a motion and it passes. So.
I am delighted to make that motion. I move that we adopt the resolution approving a successor memorandum of understanding pertaining to compensation and working conditions for the Service Employees International Union Local 1021, July 1, 2024 through July 30, 2027.
And I'll second and also make the comments to thanks to all the labor groups and all the people who are involved with that because it is take, it's a lot of work to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, I think you meant through June 30, 2027?
Did I misspeak?
I certainly did. I certainly meant to say June 30, 2027.
Okay. Does your second still stand?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you. I think you're probably here for the next one as well. Next item on our agenda is the salary resolution for unrepresented executive, executive management employees.
I'm also going to start this one off, Mayor Kate.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Director Sanchez.
And I think, I just want to confirm that we do have Angela Nicholson on our Zoom as a panelist, and I just wanted to introduce Angela with, who's an HR consultant that's been working with us in the space of studying compensation in particular. We asked her to study and evaluate and make recommendations related to the executive staff compensation. So I'm just going to turn it over to you, Angela.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, Mayor Kate. Hopefully, I look a little blurry, but I'm here. Can you see, can you see me? I'm Angela Nicholson and I've been blessed, thrilled to work with the city through bargaining this year and happy to present to you the salary resolution for unrepresented executive management employees this evening. I don't want to be too redundant. The philosophy for increases for the unrepresented executive management is very similar, identical to the philosophy that your council has considered for the other bargaining units. Essentially, this group is 11 unrepresented employees that are, that work in your various departments. We are recommending a salary adjustment of 3% across each of the years. And then additionally, equity adjustments to align so that people are adjusted according to the market. So essentially, that would result similar to what Director Sanchez just laid out. An increase in year one between 6 and 10% for these positions, in year two between 6 and 9% in these positions, and in year three between 3 and 7%. Again, all based on market equity adjustments. Additionally, two of our public safety positions have had gotten a fair amount out of whack with the market. And so those positions, we are recommending a slightly larger adjustment just to really keep pace with the market and for those positions. And finally, on the salary side, the district manager position for the San Rafael Sanitation District, we're still working on a survey for that position and we'll be back before, to your council when we have those numbers. Similar to the other units, we're aligning, just a really exciting achievement for your, for council this year is really aligning your flex cafeteria plan across your entire organization. So again, for your executive management, increasing the contribution for employee only to 950, to employee plus one to 1,900, and to the employee plus family to 2,400, putting you as being very competitive in a market and being, and being, providing really excellent quality benefits to your employees. Additionally, the possibility of severance in the event that an executive member were to leave the City of San Rafael gives your council a little bit of flexibility when working with folks that are unrepresented. And then similar non-economic terms to the other contracts, including gender neutral language throughout the, the salary resolution, bereavement leave, really making sure that that complies with the most recent legislative updates, and the addition of paid parental leave and end of life care, which again, puts the City of San Rafael really on the cutting edge of caring for the people that work, work for your city. Finally, there's a couple of position, a position that we would recommend deleting, which is the Director of Economic Development and Innovation. And the, I guess the final thing I would ask is, as part of the recommendation, is that you would authorize the city manager to actually do employment agreements with each, with each of the directors. The city hasn't done that in the past and would like to enter into employment agreements with, with every single unrepresented executive management employee, which is an important piece. So with that, I'm happy to entertain questions and would ask that your, recommend that your council adopt the salary resolution establishing the compensation and working conditions for the unrepresented executive management employees. That would be effective July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2027.
Thank you, Angela. We'll see if there are questions. Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Bushy. I don't have any questions either, so I will open up the public comment on this item. If you would like to comment or have any questions, now is your opportunity to speak. Yeah, welcome.
It's not my area of expertise, but I, I heard you say on the cutting edge of compensation. And I don't know how to say this. Are you being overly generous with your employees now? Are we going from underpaid to overpaid? Is that what's happening as a reaction?
Thank you. We will ask.
It's, it's not an ill-intended question.
Yeah, no, thank you. We'll see if there are any other questions. Then we'll. We are on item F, salary resolution for unrepresented executive management employees. If anyone else would like to speak, now is your chance. Not seeing anyone else, I will close the public comment. And I'll turn it to you, Angela, and I think it's both the money part and maybe the other parts of the compensation that you spoke. You could just clarify when you say, well compensated.
Yeah, I, if I, I perhaps misspoke, not necessarily the cutting edge on compensation, but really providing an equitable and fair, full compensation package. And that means the leave benefits and the cafeteria benefits and making sure that we're providing something that's competitive to our employees so that the City of San Rafael can retain its excellent employees. That was the intent of my comment. So I don't think, we are certainly not overcompensating people. And again, when we looked at market, we were looking at setting to the median of the market. So we are not setting to the top of the market. We are really looking at our comparable agencies and setting to the median of the market, but really looking to enhance the benefits so that we've, we can keep quality employees in the city.
Thank you for the additional information.
Sure.
I'll bring it back for comments or a motion. I, I'll just. And I know it seems like I'm saying the same thing over and over, but it is so important that we acknowledge each of these groups and what the teams have done to meet people where they are and to compensate them across the board. And you did point out the flex plan. And with this, having that similar across the entire organization, I think that is kind of a visionary. I don't know if all cities are able to do that of our size. So with that, again, thank you for your work on that, Angela. I entertain a motion on this item, please.
I'll make the motion, adopt the resolution establishing the compensation and working conditions for unrepresented executive management employees, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, and authorizing the city manager to enter into employment agreements with the under, unrepresented executive management employees.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you. This next one, I'm not sure who is presenting. So I'll name it and then we'll see who will be presenting. It's the compensation for elected city clerk and elected part-time city attorney compensation. I don't know if it's, okay, City Manager Robinson Pignon.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the city council. So I'm going to be presenting the last, but certainly not the least compensation package and salary resolution of this labor negotiation cycle. So one of the things I did want to note is there is a clerical error in the subject. It does say July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. We're not in a time machine, so I just wanted to clarify for the record that it, that this resolution establishing the compensation would cover July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. So the elected city clerk and the elected part-time city attorney, a resolution expired on June 30 this year, in keeping with the equity adjustments for unrepresented management as well as executive staff, the proposed salary increases for these positions are dependent on to the extent to which these positions, in this case, elected positions, are behind the labor market average. The proposed wage increase is 3% for each year. And the proposed adjustments to the contributions to the flex cafeteria plan are in line with the adopted labor agreements by the city council for represented employees during the same time period. And so I won't belabor the point about the flex cafeteria plan. As was already mentioned, this has been normalized across represented and unrepresented bargaining groups as well as our elected officials. In terms of non-economic items, consistent with the other MOUs and resolutions, you'll see a move to gender neutral language. In this case, there is some clarification around the dental insurance premiums that the city pays the full cost of dental insurance for the city attorney. So this is not a change, but just desire to just clarify that language. Also, the wellness benefit has been broadened to include reimbursements for wellness counseling, physical therapy, and other health and wellness related programs. In terms of fiscal impact, the additional incremental costs for fiscal year 2425 is $30,415. The following year for fiscal year 2526 is $25,088. And the year thereafter is $26,320. The proposed increases in compensation and benefits are in line with the city's budget projections and fundings for these positions is provided for in the city's general fund and adopted budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Going to the resolution itself, I did want to note that in this case, some of our salary resolutions, there's a monthly number provided or an hourly base wage. In this case, for the elected city clerk and city attorney, the, the salary schedule reflects the monthly compensation for each of those positions. Again, both resolutions, one is a tracked change version, one is a clean version so that members of the public may be able to compare the two documents and see what changes have been made. And so at this time, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council or public may have regarding this proposed resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't have any questions either, so we'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions on this item. Now is your opportunity and while people are walking down, I will note that I, the resolution is appropriate, is correct on the dates. So there won't, won't have to be any part of any motion. So it was just on the description. If anyone would like to speak, now is your chance.
Thank you. I do have some questions about the, whether it's appropriate to hand Mr. Epstein more monies. Mr. Epstein's performance as city attorney has been extremely problematic and especially looking back on the Lopez case. He did not acquit himself well in that matter. I'm also concerned looking at the volume of materials I retrieved through CPRA and I realize that that CPRA is not complete yet. But I need to bring up the fact that Mr. Epstein is being frequently included as a CC on emails that Rachel Kurtz, who has a kind of side position as the co-chair of JCRC's Banjo, she's sending out a lot of emails, essentially functioning as a lobbyist for the Israeli government. This is not the function, it's not, it should not be the function of a Jewish Community Relations Council to function as a lobbyist for Israel. It's supposed to be about Jewish community relations. It's supposed to be about Jewish community relations. This brings up for a lot of people working in the peace movement, whether JCRC and groups like ADL, which is another group that Rachel Kurtz is working with, whether they need to be registered under FARA. I think they should at least be registered as lobbying groups. I do want to bring up with reference to Mr. Epstein, however, that it appears, I asked an attorney, why is she sent, why is she seeing Rob Epstein? Why is she CCing Rob Epstein on these materials? It doesn't seem very appropriate. And some of the guesses that I got from an attorney, she copies a city attorney because she has a mistaken belief that it adds some protection from people seeing the email due to some imagined and misunderstood attorney-client privilege. The attorney pointed out that Mr. Epstein, if I could just, give me 30 more seconds. Mr. Epstein is the.
Five, four seconds.
Past vice president of Oshar Marin Jewish Center, Community Center, and he, she may be copying him to add more gravitas to the situation, the position, or copying to respond to any procedural legalistic questions or concerns from the BOs. Now, when she sends an email to the BOs, this raises the question whether you're doing this lobbying, Mr. Epstein.
I think your point has been made.
On the time of, you know, in your position, should you, should that not be clarified for the public?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comment. There were no questions raised, although comments during the public comment period, so unless there's additional comments.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, and I will just note on this item that this one is unique to all the other items at these positions are elected, and both of these positions are on the November ballot, and that is how our electorate responds when they're displeased with the way that a performance is being handled. So with that, I will use, Councilmember Bushy said you would make a motion, go ahead.
I move that we adopt the resolution establishing the compensation and working conditions for the elected city clerk and elected part-time city attorney, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Right. Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Thank you, Assistant City Manager, for your work on this item. The last item on our, during our meeting is open time for public expressions. Thank you for those who have already filled out cards. I will go through these, and of course, if you haven't filled out a card, you can still make comments. So I know you've heard a lot, and we're ready to hear from you, Susan K. Gilbert. If you are ready, welcome.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Kate. My name is Susan K. Gilbert. I met Mayor Kate on the doorstep of Vivilon when she was conducting a tour. I'm so blessed to be able to live at Vivilon. I grew up in Santa Venetia. I never imagined I'd be so grateful to be able to live here where I grew up again. Within 12 hours of sending a letter to Mayor Kate and the council regarding my safety concern about the crosswalk signal countdown, the issue is partly resolved. I'm kind of, it's unfathomable, unfathomable, almost. I lived in Oakland, and I worked very closely with staff members, with traffic engineers there. There was no such sense of urgency, no such sense of concern about safety. I'm so grateful to you. The prior amount of time for the cross signal on Brooks was seven seconds, insufficient for people who are blind or have problems with mobility. Within 12 hours, it's been raised to 10 seconds. The north-south crosswalk was previously 10 seconds. It has now been raised to 15 seconds, thanks to you, to April Miller, to Joanna. I will say, I'm going to keep advocating because I had to wave down a car that was in the third lane when I was walking someone across the street who was blind because she was on her cellphone. We nearly got squished. But we didn't, obviously. I'm here. But thank you for your continued advocacy on behalf of the residents and the visitors to Vivilon.
Thank you for your comments. I have more cards. Victor Friedman. And Susan Becker. Oh, you want Susan to go? Suzie, go ahead, Suzie. Yep, sorry, I just was looking at the cards as I had them. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Becker. I speak to you today as the president of the Captain's Cove Homeowners Association. Our property backs up to the old Regency Theater property from Smith Ranch Road all the way down to Galinas Creek. On June 27, the fire started on the unmaintained shrubs and trees behind the theater, which burned part of our fence between the two properties. Thankfully, due to the quick action of our residents and to the efficiency of the fire department, we only lost part of that fence. The flames, however, came within 20 feet of our nearest home. It could have been disastrous. Two days after the fire, 911 had to be called again because the same burned area began to smolder. Again, the fire department came out in time before the flames ignited. As you know, the theater is vacant and is for sale. The current owners are not taking responsibility for maintaining the landscaping. On a daily basis, our residents see people living in the shrubs behind the theater all the way down to Galinas Creek. The shrubs along Smith Ranch Road before our property starts is just as bad. As I understand it, there's another landowner that owns part of the property down towards the Galinas Creek end of the parking lot, all of which backs up to our property. None of this is maintained, all of which provides an environment for all kinds of dangerous activity, especially those that cause fire. Will those of us living at Captain's Cove have to pay the price, losing our homes and our safety? The members of our community hope that you take the city's fire mitigation policy seriously and enforce it soon. Please ensure that these property owners clear the trees and shrubs and continue to maintain it thereafter to keep our residents and properties safe and from destructive activity, the scariest of which could be a fire. It will happen if you don't take quick action. June 27 is clear evidence of that. Thank you. And I'd like to leave some photographs with the clerk if I may.
Yes, and thank you. And I know the city manager heard your comments and your concerns, and we do have a code enforcement arm. And I think I will give your card to, actually, your email address isn't on here, but Victor's is. So for follow-up?
We can follow.
Okay, okay, so we can follow up, so we'll have that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, come on down. Yep, you have to.
I will only, I, I'm Victor Friedman. I only want to add that because the conditions that created the fire on June 27 are still there, there's still a homeless encampment, there's a lot of dry bushes and dry shrubs. This has been a traumatic experience for the entire community of 160 families. We have been traumatized, and every day, everybody is, I'm also on the Board of Directors. So to Suzie and I, we're all constantly asked, what is the city doing? So please, I want to beg you for everybody, act immediately. Because it can happen, again, the conditions are the same. It can happen tonight, it can happen tomorrow. Please act as soon as you can. Don't wait for the corporation that runs that, those properties until they move their mechanisms. It might be too late. Thank you very much, and I want to commend the fire department for the great job they did.
Thank you. And I do have your email address, so we'll make sure that the appropriate person follows up with what will happen next. So thank you for bringing this to us. Is there anyone else? You haven't filled out a card? You can still approach and give any input to the council? Yeah, welcome.
Fun to see our government at work here. My name's Peter. I live in Sun Valley with my wife and four-year-old daughter. Earlier today, I was driving to FedEx, and a fentanyl pipe was thrown into my car window as I drove it at 25 or 35 miles an hour down the road. It shattered in the car, got all over my kid's car seat and all over her toys. Thank God she wasn't in the car. I don't know if it was fentanyl, but nobody came to help me with it, so I'm left to my own guesses as to what it was. I was recommended by the police to get a vacuum cleaner and go to the car wash. I appreciate this specific issue is a police issue, but there's a broader issue here on public safety. I read the materials that you sent to me, Mayor Kate. Thank you for the correspondence earlier on public safety and homelessness, especially a lot of the stuff that the Davidson Middle School community is going through right now. And I kind of have two concerns that I wanted to share. One is that there's just like an awful lot of obvious illegal activity happening as it relates to drug use, theft, harassment. Doesn't seem like we're having a very big impact on it. Today's incident, as evidence, my friend's bike was stolen a few weeks ago. The police were driving around the encampments. They saw, they thought they saw it, and the police said, no, we don't go in there. We're not going to help you get your bike. And then the other thing is just that the city materials frequently mention Martin versus Boise, which is now out of date with the Supreme Court decision on Grant's pass. I look forward to the August update. Hopefully, there's lots of new, new stuff to get into there in a public forum. And just kind of like a, you know, I guess a bit of a plea here, like even in the Martin versus Boise world, I think we have the opportunity to improve public safety more than we have when the Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation was in San Francisco a few months ago. The streets changed overnight, so it's doable. And I kind of leave with this, which is, you know, are we going to wait for something really awful to happen, or are we going to try to make our community safe now? I travel with my daughter in the car all the time. There's an equal chance that she could have been in the backseat, that the pipe could have broken on her, cut her eye, cut her neck. This is not hyperbole. There was glass everywhere in the car, and she just luckily was not in there. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, no, thank you, Peter. And I know from the correspondence that the police sheep has followed up, and so figuring out what can be done. I appreciate you coming down.
Thanks.
Letting us know.
Nice to meet you guys.
Yep, thank you. Don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else I would like to speak before I adjourn the meeting? Yes, welcome.
Yeah, just piggybacking on some of the comments made. So I live over there by Smith Ranch Road, too, and the fire department was amazing. We called them, you know, maybe two days after, you know, like she was saying, it was smoldering again, and they were there within a few minutes. It was, it was amazing. I do ride through that parking lot, you know, where the Smith Ranch movie theater was, and, you know, obviously, there's people going to be around. It's very isolated, so I don't, personally, I don't see a lot of problems, just a little bit of broken glass, but, you know, people who live there and, you know, can hear more, maybe have a better experience. Just to piggyback on Susan, I think your name is, crossing the street there in front of Vivilon with your dignity and your safety, I think this is important. It also, you know, anytime we're driving down Second or Third Street, you know, just years passed, that was basically a freeway before, and so now there's some signal lights that do cause, create a traffic break, which I think is good. You know, you group cars together, you can't go very fast, especially going into like San and Selmo, Fairfax, even smaller streets, Central Boulevard, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments this evening before we close?
Some of the recent issues that people brought up, whether it was Susan Gilbert or the other speakers, speak to issues that cities suffer because there isn't adequate funding, either for housing or for treatment or for other, other things. And I'd like to point out that we are currently funding a genocidal assault on Gaza. And 10 days ago, The Lancet came out with a new report indicating that the prior estimates for Palestinians killed in this bombing, which is being done with our tax dollars, with our 2,000-pound bunker buster bombs being dropped on tents with children and mothers slipping in them. The death toll for that is vastly underreported. And The Lancet's new projections, the most conservative estimate that they have for the deaths accruing for the damage that has already been wrecked upon the Palestinian people since October 7 is 186,000. 186,000. If Palestinians in Gaza are 50% children, 50% 18 and under, then we're talking about a massive number of young people. Now, that number is going to increase because we continue to sell more weapons to Israel and provide more military support, and Israel is losing this war, and they're going to become more desperate. This is why it's so important that we have an inquiry into why Rachel Kurtz is being allowed to use her position to advocate for this war. She's doing that on city email, and she's CCing Rob Epstein on that. I'd like some answers.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment this evening? Not seeing anybody. I'll close the open time for public expression, and as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I have a few comments to make about Richard Nave. Tonight, we adjourn in honor of former council member Rich Nave. As stated in his obituary, Rich lived a remarkable life marked by unwavering dedication to family, community, athletics, and public service. His journey began here in San Rafael, where he attended St. Rayfels and later San Rafael High School. Rich served our country and was a decorated member of U.S. Marine Corps during the Korean War, achieving the rank of Staff Sergeant. He served his local community as a council member in the 1980s. In addition, athletics were woven throughout his life, and he earned him induction into multiple Hall of Fames, including those at San Rafael High School, College of Marin, Marin Athletic Foundation, and San Francisco State University. Rich Nave will be remembered as a devoted husband, an inspiring father, a grandfather, a civic leader and friend to many. May his memory be a blessing. This meeting is now adjourned in memory of Rich Nave. Good night.